This is a regularly scheduled public session of the Woodbridge Board of Education. It is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by a resolution adopted at the reorganization meeting held on January 3rd, 2023. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has also been posted to the Woodbridge Hall, the Woodbridge Memorial Library, tapinto.net, and the Woodbridge Board of Education's website. Please be advised that all our portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date. Roll call.
Mr. Belmonte is absent. Mr. Fallon.
Here.
Mr. Gorven is absent. Mr. Nieves.
Present.
Mr. Obern.
Here.
And Mr. Vicaro is absent.
All right, so we've got a couple of things that we're going to be going through tonight, but Emily, we're actually going to start with you. Tonight will be your last night, right? Doing presentation, so congratulations with that as well. So I will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. All right, since the last Board of Education meeting, the juniors and seniors had an exciting time at prom, which took place at the Liberty House. We would like to thank Ms. Ianaco for all the time and effort she put into planning the prom. Sports have been a great success with every spring team making it to states. Ms. Mano took the glee and band to Teen Arts Festival where the students experienced all different forms of art. The National Honor Society added a new trip to their agenda where they volunteered at a horse rescue in Mawa, New Jersey. On Wednesday, a handful of seniors are going to Doyle to help out with Field Day, and with the school year coming to an end, students are preparing for finals and the seniors are getting ready for graduation.
Please, any questions? All right, so we're going to pause and do something a little different. Tony's going to come down there and do his superintendent report and then move his way onto the Awards and Recognizations.
Emily, before you run out of here, Emily, I just want to, again, on behalf of the board, thank you for serving. This was the first year where it was a relative law for school boards to appoint a student representative to the board. Many districts did it as a voluntary thing, and this year we were fortunate enough to have Emily and her classmate Abigail rotate that in the role. Emily, we appreciate your being here and for giving us the wonderful reports, and we hope you have a great rest of your senior year. I'm going to open this evening with my superintendent's report. It will be brief. Regarding state assessments, the Doyle School and the Intermediate School are conducting makeups this week. The high school testing will continue until next week. As you heard from Emily, and she was a participant, the high school had their prom last Thursday. We had a great weather day for our showoff and our prom in Jersey City. Everything I heard was wonderful. I want to congratulate the Class of 23 Advisor, Mrs. Ianaco, and the officers of the graduating classes. I said, I heard that everything from food, entertainment, the venue activities, even I heard traffic was good. So congratulations to all of them. Regarding our calendar, some reminders, especially for this week. This Thursday is a one-session day for students only. The high school is dismissed at 12:13 PM. The Doyle and Intermediate School dismiss at 12:28 PM. Schools are then closed for an extended Memorial Day weekend and will reopen on Wednesday, May 31st. Our spring concerts at the Intermediate School for parents, June 1st at 6:30 PM, at Doyle School on June 8th, and there's two different showings on grade level, 8:45 AM and 1:30 PM, and then the high school on June 5th, again, two showings for capacity. The band will begin at 6:00 PM. We'll take a break and clear out the auditorium, and the choir will begin at 7:30 PM. Field days. Doyle will have their field day on Wednesday of this week. The Intermediate School will have theirs on Friday, June 2nd. And regarding the high school, the Senior Academic Awards Program will be on June 6th, which is a Tuesday, and the Spring Sports Awards will be on June 8th. Now I transition to one of my greatest pleasures in my job. I get to recognize the Bergen County Educators of the Year as recognized by our district. It's a county program. Pretty much all the county participates, where every school building in your district has the opportunity to select one person as a representative to receive the recognition award. And this Thursday afternoon, Thursday afternoon, there'll be a countywide luncheon in Teaneck where all of our honorees will attend, along with our building administrators, all throughout the county. It's a wonderful day, and I'm so thrilled to give recognition to two, to three ladies who I feel involved with, whether I hired you or saw you as a child when you were younger. And what I enjoyed most is when I visited with the administration to each classroom to make the announcement. The happiest people in the room were the students because they realized that they had, they knew already that they had a great teacher, but to see their teacher get that recognition made their day, whether it was at the Doyle School, the Intermediate School, or the high school. So I'm going to read one resolution because it reads the same for each teacher. Whereas the Woodridge School District is participating in the 2023 Bergen County Teacher Recognition Program, and whereas the selection committee of the school district met to consider nominations, and whereas the committee unanimously selected as a blank school award recipient based upon use of effective instructional techniques and methods, establishment of productive classroom climate and rapport with students, and development of feelings of self-worth and love of learning in students. Our staff member nominee has served the school district in an exemplary manner for a number of years, demonstrating not only the above cited criteria, but also reflecting caring energy and enthusiasm, both in and out of the classroom. Be it resolved that the Woodbridge Board of Education wholeheartedly supports our candidate's selection as the Woodridge School District's 2023 Bergen County Teacher Recognition Program Award recipient and duly commends her for this honor. And my first recipient is a teacher at the Doyle School, third grade teacher, also served the first grade for a while. I had the privilege of being there when she started as a teacher in our building, had the privilege of being the football coach when she was a cheerleader in our high school building. She is a fantastic teacher. She has a strength in teaching language arts to our students. Her classroom, it was early in the morning, we tried to navigate it with Ms. Schmidt and everybody else. Her classroom was overjoyed when I was able to announce Brittany Francini as the Doyle School Teacher of the Year. Brittany? Moving on to the Intermediate School. This young lady started as a teacher in our district in November of 2010. Again, I was fortunate enough to be part of the process to hire her. She's a special ed teacher at the Woodridge Intermediate School. And again, as a special ed teacher, some of her settings are small, but despite, I think, the four or five students in the room, their reaction was of 100 students. They were so happy. There were hugs because, again, even though the recognitions for this year, they know what they have every single day. So congratulations from the Intermediate School, Lori Lynn Frankie. Last, but certainly not least, we have another teacher of special education in the high school who serves us both in inclusion classrooms for English in the high school as well as pull-out resource classes of English. And I had the honor of observing her earlier in the year in a resource class where she did a remarkable job, and you can tell that the students genuinely appreciate her efforts and her persistence to ensure that the students do well. And funny story, we tried to surprise our recipient, and we went to the room and she wasn't there. So we were sitting in the hallway, and I had to hide flowers the best I could, and then when she came up the stairs, we tried to act normal and then followed her right into the classroom. She was probably freaked out of her mind. But again, now, in a high school classroom of an inclusion class of English 11th grade students, they were very happy. Sometimes it's hard to make a high school student very happy early in the morning. They were very happy and overjoyed so that they can see me bestow the honor onto Colleen Cusickrode. Now, my last announcement brings me sadness and joy. I am happy that I had the privilege to work with our honored retiree this year. I am sad to see her go. I'm happy for you because you get to go. I'm somewhat jealous, I must admit. Mrs. Angela Danielle began her service in our district in September of 1998 and has been employee of our school district since that time. Angela Danielle has served with distinction and dedication as a teacher for the Woodridge School District, and whereas Angela has given notice of her retirement effective June 30th, now therefore be it resolved that the Woodridge Board of Education recognizes the contributions of Angela Danielle and extends their sincere gratitude and appreciation to her and wishes her a long and happy retirement. In our last board meeting, I made a point of, I don't know if you watched, Mrs. Danielle, but it was your last Cinco de Mayo. I wanted to make sure you had a great day in school, but you did outside of school. It's your own business. And then I also observed you attended our prom this year. That was a nice way to go out. I'm sure the kids appreciated it. Mrs. Danielle and I, over the years, we'd walk up and down the hall. We'd say, how you doing? Mrs. Danielle would say, mensa, mensa. I'd say, asi, asi, and we'd just keep walking. Angela, I hope that the remaining days are full of great memories. Your students absolutely adore you. It's not easy every day walking in and teaching the Spanish language to students who have to work harder to learn it, and you've done it magnificently. You were an Italian teacher a long time ago with us as well. As an administrator, you've always been a staff member that I can rely upon to get the job done, not only for your students, but any students that come in your way in the hallway or any other setting in the school. So for that, you will be sorely missed. Angela, this later in the board meeting, we will formally accept the resolution, but don't worry, you are retiring. Angela, could you come up, please? Mr. Nieves, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alpro. Congratulations, everyone, on your awards and staying out for your retirement. We're going to make our way on to our student of the month, but I'm going to ask that we actually start with the high school and start with the seniors first because we have some commitments that they need to leave for.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to start, well, do you want me to start with the senior? All right. First, we're going to start with the 12th grade. We have Gianna Pascunucci, who is not here tonight. Gianna, AKA Miss School Spirit. Gianna attends all school events, even on crutches. If I ever need anything done for the senior class, Gianna is the one who's always there to help. Gianna puts her heart and soul into everything she does. She's always volunteering to help administration make videos and is always looking for ways to help boost school spirit. Gianna is a great student and a great friend. The hallways will definitely be quiet next year without her. 11th grade, Krishna Patel. Krishna, please come up. Krishna is a kind and respectful student. He always displays great manners and respectful to everyone in class. He always tries his hardest and is always willing to help in any way he can. He is an example of a positive role model in our school. He may be shy, but once you get to know him, he'll come to find, you'll come to find that he is honest and a very positive person. Congratulations, Krishna. 10th grade, we have Natalie Turri. Natalie, please come up. Natalie is an excellent student with impeccable worth ethic. She always tries her hardest in class and always tries to problem solve on her own. She always displays great manners, is honest, and is always respectful to her classmates and teachers. She always has a smile on her face. Congratulations, Natalie. 9th grade, Jake Wall. Jake, please come up. Jake is a respectful student that takes pride in his work. Jake is kind, smart, and well-liked by his classmates. Jake is always there to lend a helping hand to his teachers, administrators, and friends. I would also like to make a note that Jake is one of the students that is always outside, willing to help the administrators, bringing all the stuff into the garage while all of his friends run away. On the field and in the classroom, Jake makes sure to always give 100%. Congratulations. For the 8th grade, we have Leonardo Finaigra. Come on up. Leonardo is beyond mature, respectful, diligent, and a true role model student. He is a wonderful example of an honor student in how you do not have to be the loudest voice in the room to be a student leader. He's always volunteering to go to the board, to help classmates, and to do various tasks in the classroom. He has great school spirit and takes pride in all that he does and participates in. Congratulations. And for the 7th grade, Ava Creya, who is not here. Ava is determined to achieve academic success. She is responsible, kind, and works hard to achieve her goals. She's well-mannered and very respectful to her classmates and teachers. She's extremely creative and organized, which often shows during project-based activities. Ava always has a smile on her face and is very positive. Congratulations, Ava.
Okay, on to the Intermediate School. I have four recipients tonight. We're going to start out with our 4th grade. Let's call up this, to this stage here, to the podium, Adrian Mendoza. Are you here, Adrian? Looks like Adrian isn't here. Adrian is hardworking, pays attention to all his classes, is organized, is a great listener, respectful to both teachers and classmates, and has demonstrated his ability to be an upstander, helping to remediate conflicts between his classmates. In school, he loves math and gym. Outside of school, in his free time, you can find him playing outside, playing video games, and hanging out with his friends. He also plays on three sports teams throughout the year, including soccer, basketball, and baseball, and he especially enjoys soccer and everything about it. When he grows up, he has big dreams that we, and we could see he's already working toward them right now. He wants to become a professional soccer player. As it came to, it came to us as no surprise, when he was asked who his role model was, he said Messi. He admires his incredible soccer skills and looks up to him. Congratulations to our 4th grade student of the month for May, Adrian Mendoza. On to the 5th grade. So for the 5th grade, I have two recipients. I have my recipient, actually from last month, who was unable to make it, but she wanted to come, so we're going to recognize her tonight, and then we're going to have our recipient for this month as well. So first, last month's recipient was Isabella Panetta. Isabella, come on up. Isabella is a hard worker who always strives to do her best. She is kind and always has a smile on her face. This is most certainly true as I see her at drop-off in the mornings. Mom drops her off on First Street and out exits Isabella with her smile and a hello, and she is ready to go. Isabella really enjoys playing basketball and doing gymnastics. In her free time, she likes to draw. When she grows up, she would like to be a basketball player. Congratulations to our 5th grade student of the month, Isabella Panetta. And now we have another 5th grade student of the month. Is Olivia Brozek here? Olivia, are you here? Yes, there you are, right there. Olivia is kind, artistic, friendly, very conscientious with her work, and always tries her best in class. She always strives to do well and is not afraid to ask for help from her teachers when she needs it. Olivia's favorite subject in school is social studies. When asked why, she said because she gets to learn history and facts about history, which she loves. Outside of school, she is big into soccer, drawing, gymnastics, and Girl Scouts. She also loves guinea pigs. And spending time with her parents and brother. Her role model is her mom because she has to work hard for her job and raise two children. When she grows up, she would like to be an anesthesiologist or a veterinarian. She likes these two jobs because she loves animals, and being a doctor sounds awesome. Congratulations to our 5th grade student of the month for May, Olivia Brozek. And on to our 6th grade student of the month. Our 6th grade student of the month is Ms. Catherine Garcia. Come on up, Catherine. Catherine joined the Intermediate School only four short months ago, and she has already stood out amongst her teachers. Catherine is new to the United States and is only just beginning to learn our language. Regardless of the language barrier, Catherine has demonstrated her eagerness to learn, her strength, and her tenacity to continually put forth her best effort regardless of obstacles, and also her kindness for others, which we have all noted. Catherine is open to all subject areas, liking them all without a particular preference. She looks up to her older sister, who always gives her great advice and pushes her to never give up. When Catherine grows up, she wants to be a veterinarian as well. Congratulations to our 6th grade student of the month, Catherine Garcia.
Each month, the Doyle School focuses on a specific character education theme. Since last month encompassed school-wide activities and initiatives around the theme of honesty, grade-level teachers were asked to nominate a student on behalf of their respective grade that best embodies important trait. The teachers were running out for each of their nominees. Kinderin Bone. Robert demonstrates honesty in the classroom daily. He always communicates truthfully and respectfully to his classmates, teachers, and the staff at Doyle. Robert is always honest when answering questions, and he stays true to himself in all situations. We can always count on Robert to tell the truth, and that is something he should be very proud of. Great job, Robert. In Grade 1, Julian Chetta. Another Chetta family member, come on down. Julian is a sweet and kind boy. He exemplifies what it means to be honest. We can always count on Julian to be a good role model in class. We're so proud of his good work and dedication, and he is an absolute pleasure to have, not only in the classroom, but at the Doyle School. Congratulations, Julian. In Grade 2, we have Trent Millar. We can always rely on Trent to be honest and tell the truth, even when others around him are not necessarily being truthful or making the best choices. Because of his honest nature and character, many of his peers actually confide in him for help and advice. He always guides them in the right direction. We are so proud of Trent's honesty and integrity. And last but not least, in Grade 3, we have Julius McLean. There he is. Julius is an amazing student as well as friend on a daily basis. He is trustworthy, and you can always count on him to lend a helping hand or stand up for a classmate in need. He is a true role model to all students, and you can always count on him to help you make the right choices. So proud of you, Julius. Thank you.
As much as I know you all want to pay for the rest of the meeting, it's a beautiful night, so I'll take one-minute pick, and you deserve an opportunity to recite. All right, let's get back to our regularly scheduled activities. So approval of minutes upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Board of Education, approved minutes of the following meeting, executive and working session, April 24th, 2023. Can I get it first? Mr. Fallon, second. Mr. Obern, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon.
Yes.
Mr. Gorven is absent. Mr. Obern.
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Belmonte is absent. Mr. Nieves.
Yes. Trustees, before I actually go through the committee reports, do you have anything on new business, communications or unfinished business? No, you're good? Okay. Not a big one for tonight. So for curriculum instruction, we have approval of home instruction termination, approval of temporary home instruction, approval of home instruction, approval of evaluation requests, approval of guest speaker for the journalism club. On to personnel, we have approval of personnel appointment, approval of student volunteers for community hours for the health care program for the 2223 school year. We have approval of the request for leave of absence, acceptance of a retirement notification, approval of an appointment of a substitute, approval of summer acceleration learning personnel appointments, approval of home instruction personnel, personnel policy, none at this time. Buildings and grounds, we have one, which is approval of a statement of insurance for the 2223 lead testing program for submission to the county office. For finance, we have the approvals of the bill list, approval of the fund transfers, and approval of the acceptance of donations. And on to board operations, we have the approval of gratification of the May 2023 public session board meeting resolutions, approval of the agreement with the New England Institute of Technology for Occupational Therapy internships, approval to submit an amendment to the 2223 application for the ESEA ESA, approval of food service management contract for 2324, and approval of the breakfast lunch prices for the 2324 school year, and lastly, approval of the district support for approvals of bills S3203 and A4835. Trustees, any comments or questions before I open it to the hearing of citizens? I'm going to open it up to the hearing of citizens on the resolutions only.
Hi. Oh, we're already on here. I need to write my name tonight. Perfect. I just had a question. The Summer Learning Acceleration Program, is that for what students? Is that our IEP students or is that? Oh, you're not there yet. Sorry. Like echoing, right? Okay, the Summer Acceleration Program, what students is that geared for?
In addition to the ESY, which is not on this agenda, will be on the next agenda, Summer Acceleration is for remediation during the summer, for gen ed students.
For general students, okay. Thank you. And the Board of Education's thanks for that, right? It's not Title 1 money or any of that?
It is, it is title funds, yes.
It is, it is title funds, yes.
Oh, it is? Okay, I just saw hourly, so it was a turn. Okay, thank you.
Anything posted online? All right, I'm going to close the hearing of citizens on the resolutions. Trustees, so Moonaki cannot be confirmed tonight, correct? So we will just confirm Woodridge only, curriculum instruction, one through five, personnel three and six, none for policy, none for buildings and grounds, finance number three, and board operations, none. Can I get it first? Mr. Fallon? Mr. O'Byrne, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes?
Mr. Gorman is absent. Mr. O'Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Vicaro is absent. Mr. Biamonte is absent. Mr. Neves?
Yes.
Trustees, thank you for your support. I don't see anything else for tonight for consent agenda, communications, unfinished business. I will open it up to the hearing of citizens on anything I'd like to speak about.
I know, I don't need to say who I am. My first question is if there's an update on the construction at Doyle.
After speaking with Mr. Iler, I was advised that we are in the procurement stage, which is, I believe, prior to going out to bid in terms of identifying the types of materials you're going to need, et cetera. And when I asked about when we could expect construction to begin, he said most likely in December. And the timeline remains to open that building addition in September of 2025.
So I just want to jump in, come over the top. So Tony did give me that last week. I'm okay with things being in procurement. I asked for more of a phase one through four, so we get a little bit more transparency. From now to December is going to be six months, so I'm looking for some more intermediary steps by the time. So the procurement process means we're going to go out to bid. We know what the selection process is, what happens between now and then, when we make that decision, and then if we decide to break ground, what are some of the intermediate steps before we get there?
Right, so they're planning on breaking ground come December?
Say it again.
They plan to break ground come December?
That's, that's their plan now.
That's their plan in the winter, okay. And then what does that look like in terms of what's going to be happening at Doyle? Breaking ground, are they starting in the back like they said they were?
The December phase will be the outdoor where the new wing will be. Anything that they're planning for inside the building, they're going to try to take care of in the summer months.
Sorry, echoing. Okay, so just thinking ahead a little bit in terms of our students, and they'll be losing their whole backyard, you know, outside playground and that area they play for recess. I do believe I remember them saying that they're going to take the upper parking lot, the one closer to the kindergarten, put a fence around that, and that's going to become their new playground. So I just wanted to maybe consider that we can maybe work with the principal and do something like a walking field trip to maybe 14th Street, so the kids would have an open field to play on, a playground to play on. We all know that gross motor skills, outdoor time is extremely important. I'm thinking that they'll probably break ground more in the spring. It's exactly when everyone starts to get back outside, so maybe we can rearrange their schedules to allow for that.
One update, because I see Jim back there, too. In our next meeting, I was just asking on June 26th, we're going to, when we have our full form, we're going to have our discussion around the parent committee. I know that some, I spoke to some of you who have interest in it. Following the June 26th meeting, we'll come back and we'll start doing our selection. Ask me to come in, you know, typical process.
At the last meeting, I asked about the class sizes for the second grade going into third grade for next year. There's currently four sections in fourth, third grade, and there's currently five sections in second grade. Are we continuing with five sections for second grade next year?
No, so, yeah, I'll answer first, and then you do. So I go exact, so this is why Saturday when I stopped by, we go through this all the time, not just here, just in general, that in July, we go through and do our sections. And then, we've always had a goal to keep those numbers well under 25, and I totally hear what you're asking, and that is still our goal. But we don't have anything to report on as far as what those things are. No, I'm just saying.
Why is that?
Because we're not done.
There's already five sections. It's not like I'm telling you that there's going to be more or less kids. We know that five sections are required to service those second grade going into third grade students. You need to add a section to third grade, so you're not sure if you're doing that?
I don't know what we're going to do across the entire district. We go through a planning.
But I'm not asking for the district.
But you're asking me if we have five now, if we're going to continue for five next year?
Right.
I don't know.
How do you not know that in advance?
Because we go through our planning process like we do every year that you've asked this. We don't until July.
Okay, are we?
It's our goal every time that we've gone through this, even when we give them real transparency.
Alba, that's like in kindergarten when I'm talking to you about how many students we have, and you say to me, oh, there's probably about 100 registered. We might get more. If we get more, yes, we're going to add a fifth section. I'm not, I'm talking about existing five sections. Are we taking it down to four?
I don't know.
Are we doing trailers come September?
At this time, we are engaging with the vendor for the modular units, yes.
And how many?
Either two or three. They're, for lack of a better word, adjustable, so we have to work with the grass area in front of the main portion of the Doyle to leave the parking lot open for that possible future recess area.
So you're going to put two or three in that lower parking lot?
On the grass area in front of the nurse's office, room three.
They all play right there, and that would fit two to three trailer or modular units? Okay, and why wouldn't we use the lower parking lot? Was that not discussed, or just you guys thought that was a better option?
That really hasn't been discussed. The one discussion was the upper lot, because two or three would fit fine there, but the thought was to keep that upper lot as a possible play area when our current play area gets broken up. The lower area has not been something that's been thought about.
Okay, I'm not sure if I could ask this question, so you have to let me know. But I would like to ask every single board member if they would increase class sizes or add a section to third grade. If we had to put a trailer there, would you be willing to put a trailer? Or would you look to increase class sizes? Can I ask each of them that?
Yeah. I would prefer to see smaller.
Right, it's a nicer word. That's yours?
Hi, Bernie.
I would definitely like to see the smaller class sizes. On a temporary situation with trailers, that would be fine. I don't think trailers should be there for decades, but on a temporary situation, yes, absolutely smaller class.
Okay, and when will you be able to give me that, how we're going to work that for next year?
So comfortable with July?
July?
Wait a minute. So next meeting is June 26th. I'll do a report out on that.
I'm, you probably said it already, but you need to explain to me why you don't know that information now? Because you have to do planning. What are we planning for?
So we might move some teachers around. We have to talk about the modulators. We have to do what dictates the rest of the, kind of, how Doyle's going to be started with kindergarten. There's a lot of things right now, as you say, it's June, we're ending the year. This is not necessarily, this is a priority, but it's a priority, too, while we get through all the other things we do to go through the school year. And then what we've always done typically is then say, okay, now we're done with the school year, and now we get into planning mode for the following year. Tony, it's always been a July effort, always been a July effort for as long as I've been on the board. But what Tony's saying is, you know, he'll have more. You're comfortable with reporting out on it, June 26th, on what all the classes are going to look like for next year.
And on June 26th, will you know if you are bringing trailers or not?
I will say yes, but Tony, I'd prefer to hear on modular school on June 26th.
Yes, we're going to need trailers regardless. It's a matter of what's going to, modulars, forgive me. It's a matter of what's going to be in the modulars.
That makes you feel better.
Because in addition to any possible increase in sections of a grade level, we're adding at least two new special ed programs to the Doyle School. So the trailers are going to house something to help with the overflow in the Doyle School.
Right, and it's from my understanding, we would have to at least have one trailer if we're going to continue with five sections of second going into third grade, correct? Because you would have to either empty out the media center or the art room to make another classroom. There's no, there's not another classroom available.
Once we know what we're going to need, my understanding of that these modular units are very, again, I use the word flexible, that's how it's explained to me. I can make them anything I need to make them into in terms of size. So our size, we're going to order these units. Our size, the size of the units will tell us, will give us an idea of what we could put in there. Obviously, if it's going to be a classroom, that might take up one whole unit, and then we'd have two other units to work with. And are we going to use those units for smaller areas to pull small groups out of the Doyle School and put, for example, the child study team, which occupies a built-in classroom? Could we put them in an area of a modular unit in order to give one of our new special ed classes a classroom space of their own? Our current art room right now houses probably six different teachers or programs in it. You know, could we come to a point where we could put all those people in modular units and then have a classroom available, a large one, but a classroom? Those are the type of things that we're working out right now, along with special ed students' classifications changing and programming changing.
I understand all of that. I get the special ed part. I have a hard time understanding the classroom part of it, because I don't see that changing, so.
The other thing that we also have to remember is that Mr. Alba was not saying it, but it's a given, you're going to have staffing issue getting staff. We've had problems throughout the entire district with getting people hired as well. So we have to think about that as well.
Thank you. An open field trip, and what I mean by that is you can give the parents, you know, the whole year, you can give them, you know, whenever construction starts from, say, April to June, that they can pick and choose any time that they want to go to get the kids out of the building and have some open space to run around. We did it when Dr. Lango was here, the pre-K class was able to take walking field trips there, and it was very successful, so.
And we also have the expanse of the rack as well. Down the hill as opposed to, but yes, your daughter, your children, my children were in that trip. I took the trip to the preschool playground. That is definitely something that's, we're fortunate to be so close to it, so it's definitely something that could be considered.
I think we need to just use what we have to make it a little bit better than the turn of it.
Any other questions?
Christine Cruz, 194 Palmer. Good evening. Do you know what the current class sizes are of the current second grade?
Second grade class size?
Ms. Schmidt, correct me if I'm wrong. Currently, we're five sections, 18 to 19 students, depending upon what time of day, et cetera.
18 to 19, that's including the inclusion classroom?
Yes.
I'm going to speak openly as a parent of a second grader, but also as an educator, and so I understand the way the board goes. I understand funding. I understand staffing, I do. And I understand that all of you respect your educators and us as parents, I do. But I think that what I'd like to just take note of is that these current second graders are the children who had to leave pre-K for early. They had to hybrid kindergarten. They did first grade in a way that was not normal. They had to make up for a lot of lost time in kindergarten. This was their first normal year, and they made a lot of progress and a lot of strides this year, socially, academically. To take five sections and put it into four as an educator, that's a difficult thing to do. There were five sections to begin with for a reason, because you knew that four wasn't enough. That's for the inclusion classrooms and for the general ed classrooms. Next year, those children, they have to take state testing. It's the first year they have to take state testing. We all know what the state tests look like. We know how difficult it is. As behalf of one of the educators, I would say that it's unfair to do that to the third grade teachers even. They work hard. I understand that you respect them, I do. I think that the class sizes, being fewer children, we all know, there's more time to focus on in-depth lessons. With more kids in the room, they're going to have to focus more on behavior management, organization. I think that it's just something, and I don't mean it as like a disrespectful comment, I promise, but I just urge you to think of that next month, and when you think of July, to think of these kids, and to think of what they deserve in their education, and to think of the teachers as well.
That was very well said, great, sorry, what answer? So I don't, I wasn't at the last meeting. I have no idea how four, it just ever came down to why there's four sections. I mean, did we ever say that there was going to be four sections? Did we ever communicate? So I don't even know where the four sections came from.
Small town, things get passed fast. We all know that we've been here a long time.
I know, but I don't know.
So that's why we're here to clarify.
But I don't know if Ms. Schmidt's been involved. I've never heard of four sections. I only quote wind of this before the meeting and said it might be some questions. There is no way that we ever want to decrease the class size.
I know.
There's a lot going on. I can't even think of a time in district where we had a situation like this. But I'm not saying I don't know, because we have plans to do it or we're even entertaining it. We just have a lot of other things to close the school year that we're responsible for. But you say, you're an educator, for the current kids to get through graduation, to get through. What we're saying, there is a process, and the process has been the same. This has been a constant question about what are the class sizes going to look like for next year? And it's been the same since I've been on here. Let's just wait, let's get through our end-of-year, you know, activities what we're responsible to for the kids to end the year, and then we go through the planning, and then July, that will all go out. And I have to say, in the 13, 14 years, we've never made the change. I'm just saying, I don't know right now, because there's just a lot of other moving parts. But I think everything that you said is, is well spot on, and, you know, totally the way I would expect Tony and our administrators to be thinking. I just, I'm not saying I don't know, because there's any else here anymore.
I understand, and I respect, I do. I know that there's no alternative. I know that you sit as a board, as a group of people who want to do what's best for this town and the education of our students. I've known Mr. Alba for a long time. I know that he wants what's best for the kids in this town. I know that, you know, his heart was with this town. That's why he's still here, and I know that he wants what's best for these kids. And I, and you know, you all have kids that have been raised here, and you're, they're in high school. And so I understand that, and I respect that. But I hope that when it comes down to planning, that if it comes down to that second grade group, and, you know, there's another option, the option stays with keeping the five sections for the benefit of the teachers and the students in that grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question with William Sizer, 270 North Ave. You're talking about the modulars, trailers, whatever they call them. Has there been consideration to put an administration into the trailers to open up classrooms for the kids don't have to go outside in the winter, back and forth?
So I mean, I'll, the Tony answer, but there's been several different scenarios that he's thought of what would work well in that situation. So did you hear the question? Would we anticipate administration, other functions that would be, that can take the space of the module as well?
And open up the space in the school itself?
Honestly, I don't know if I'd take my principal out of the building that has 500 students and put them in a trailer outside.
Well, not just principal.
Child study team definitively would go into a modular if that's what fit best and free up a classroom space inside. Obviously, my nurse's office is going to remain in the heart of the school, but we will look at, we probably have three or four very small classrooms that are used for very small class settings that perhaps could be moved, and something else can go in there instead. It's a little bit of a shell game. We're trying to move things around. We're waiting for 25, but 25's not happening in next September. And we have a lot, we have a possibility of five sections going to four. Right behind it, we have five sections that could be six with more students. So these are things that, when we're talking about the modulars, literally trying to make it fit, that's what we're trying to do.
Right, I was just making the suggestion that maybe the administration could go.
We're going to, you know, I'll give up my classroom, but I don't think any Doyle School kid wants to be in the high school. I'll give up my office, I'll go outside in my car if I have to.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Faith Armanitis, 191 Oldfield. I have a question about curriculum, and this is part selfish and part I would hope that it would help the students. Earlier this year, I started working with the journalism teacher here at the high school in Mrs. Papp. She was lovely. I came in, I talked to the- She was lovely. Um I came in, I talked to the students. Some of them were able to submit articles to us, which we happily ran. But she explained that the journalism class in the high school is only a half year. So she has class turnover for marking periods three and four. So I was wondering, and I don't know if it's too late in the year to plan for next year, if you would consider having the journalism class be a full year. That way she has more time to, in September, you know, uh get an idea of where their schedules are, and then jump into the teaching, and get a little more in-depth and to the different styles of reporting. That way it can go the whole year instead of having to turn over to the students again in, in the third marking period. Thank you.
Uh Faith, what I can reply to that is, there's two sides to look at it. One, a semester course might work well for a student who wants to take something else besides the journalism. Um additionally, if I had enough staffing and I could offer two sections of a full-year journalism to, to seat all those students, I would. Right now, we're doing it in semesters, and, you know, even though it's only two marking periods, it's two separate bodies of groups of students. Um but it's something I could talk to the high school administrator. I totally understand your concern.
She was great. The students who submitted the first semester were fabulous. They did the story about Ms. Garvin, and we had two back-to-back Mallory stories. Um so I mean, they, and we had somebody do something on the, the school musical. But now, when she had the turnover, it seemed like she was trying to, you know, regain, re-engage with this new crop to assess their fundamental writing skills and then jump into the curriculum again, so. Just a thought.
It is, it is a challenge in late May to get twelfth graders to do anything.
Gotcha, yeah.
So I, I totally understand it. It's something I will talk to the administration about. I totally complete your, I understand your point completely.
Thank you.
I just have one more question. The class that you're adding, you said that you're adding a special education classroom. What are those, what kind of program is being added?
We will be adding an L L D classroom, and I believe we have a grade level that currently does not have a pull-out resource, but as they move to the next grade level, they will have a pull-out resource.
Okay, so that L L D will be which grade levels that you're adding?
I believe it's the early elementary, the, the, some preschool, some K, some one.
Okay, thank you.
Brian Foley, four two two North Ave. Uh one question I have is regarding the security for the trailers that you would have. Uh you just stated a moment ago that you wouldn't even want Ms. Schmidt out there. Uh what precautions are currently in place, 'cause you admitted that you will have to have them, uh for the children?
Obviously, trailer's not gonna be sat out on a plain of grass without any sort of structure around it. So from an edifice standpoint, something's gonna be erected around it as, as some sort of barrier. In addition to, our hope is that each school building next year will have its own school officer, whereas now Doyle and Intermediate School are rotating, in addition to adding cameras to that, that trailer area as well.
Okay. Uh in regards to the officers, uh the officers that are in the school in the morning, are they paid through the Board of Education? So they're just as a courtesy to the town? 'Cause a lot of mornings, they're inside the school, watching the children go in. Wouldn't they be best served actually around the school, monitoring what's going on?
And I'll, uh, we'll talk to our liaison tonight about that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh I just wanted to thank you guys again for adding this little, the write-ups for the student and moms. I think that's an excellent addition that we went back to. I really enjoy that. The journalism teacher at the Intermediate School has done an excellent job. I know I said it again, but she continues to bring in people to speak to the kids. It's been a very good program that benefits. Maybe it's something we pull it into for seven through twelve to continue it as a club, if there's a lot of students that are interested. And I also wanted to give kudos to the art show. It was very impressive that the art teacher was able to, with limited space, as we know, she's on a cart, and a lot of students to be able to produce that kind of artwork. And then I just have one final question that you'll probably have to get back to me, but I was just curious of how many students have entered and exited our three buildings this year?
Can we just turn over?
Yes.
The total number. I think we'll have to get, how many, how many have entered at least, or was the?
No transfer, like how many new students have we, for each of the three buildings, not so much three level? Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have anything posted online? All right. Close this hearing, citizens. Um any final comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, I know. Just gonna have feedback again? I know Sen. Jordan Yell ran out to enjoy the weather, but she will be dearly missed. She was an excellent teacher while I was here. Anytime that I'm walking the hall, you know, come to see things go on, and I'm here at the graduation, whatever, she was welcome, open arms, and I still carry the Italian, Spanish name she gave me of Antonio with me, and when people ask my full name, I sometimes drop the Antonio, it's a joke. So she was a very good teacher, and she will be very missed.
Thank you, Dylan. Eric Chaney? Uh couple of key dates coming up. June sixteenth is our high school graduation. June sixth and eighth, we have our academic awards, our spring sports awards, uh which, to my knowledge, is, is here. Um also, June sixteenth, we have our third grade farewell, right down at Doyle, I believe, at nine AM. Um am I missing anything? Then we have Intermediate. The night of the fourteenth. Yep. Uh and then for our next meeting, we'll do an update on spring sports, 'cause we've got a couple different teams that do it in counties and states, et cetera. So, uh, we'll report out on that. Motion to adjourn? Fallon, O'Byrne, all in favor? All right, close tonight's hearing. Thank you, everyone.